I'd like to call the meeting's order. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Vasselli.
Here.
Mrs. Billings.
Here.
Mr. Sirianni.
Here.
Dr. Selly.
Here.
Mr. Pallone.
Here.
And I hereby certify this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and clauses required by law.
Okay, so we have five items on the agenda this evening. The first is capital budget with Mr. Hayes and Mr. Martin. Lifeguarding private beaches with Mr. Zuba. Changes to the ABC ordinance, Chief Robach. Performance and maintenance guarantees, planning and zoning ordinance amendment, Mr. Aaron. And the review of the regular meeting agenda. So let's start with Mr. Hayes and Mr. Martin with the capital budget.
Okay. So we've completed our capital budget program to present to you for your consideration. And it includes three basic categories. There are... There's four... There's two dump trucks with Plaz and Sanders for public works, a rack body with a lift gate for public works, a leave vacuum that goes in the back of a dump truck for public works, and a John Deere tractor for public works. So the trucks, one of them is replacing one that caught fire at a snowstorm a couple months ago. We destroyed it. And the second one will replace another truck. So everything that we're getting, we're getting rid of old equipment. The rack body will replace it. The zip body that will go.
What's that?
A rack body? It's a flashhead truck with sides on it and a lift gate. You know, when we send our guys out for water heaters and things like that, we like to use the lift gate to save their vacuum that's hurt. So we have a power lift gate. It lifts stuff up and it lifts them up, save them from lifting it. But one we have now is, I believe is over 20 years old, and we're looking to get rid and replace that. And one John Deere tractor to be used on the beach as well as in winter for snow. And that will replace two. We look to get rid of two, trading in two of the older tractors.
Are we doing, you said, with the rakes?
Yes. In the summer with the rakes, and in the winter with the plow. But we're downsizing the number of tractors. We'll replace, buy one, new one, and get rid of two older ones. So they're all being... Whatever we were asking for, we're getting rid of some of them. So that total of $630,000. The other program that we're seeking to do is paving program. So public works, Stan and his staff surveyed the streets and presented us a list, which we sent the engineers for pricing. And we're looking to $1,500,000 in streets. And then there's one remaining drainage project. That's not on the current drainage program, which I presented to you last year, which is still ongoing. In fact, we met with the county today and we're square rooting that to go up for bid. And that is a drain line between Edwards and Coleman Avenue in the north end. I'm sure most of you have seen it. There's been some emails back and forth and things like that. And that was about $240,000. So it's $1,750,000 for the drainage. And then the last program is city-owned traffic signals. We own 14 traffic lights in the city. And many of them have dysfunctional pedestrian crossing signs, signals, that are... They're so old that the parts are obsolete. We can't get them. So what we were suggesting, it costs about $112,000 for each intersection to replace the lights and the signals and the control device. So we're recommending to do two. We're suggesting to do two a year to try to over time catch up to the lights. And we're recommending the two lights on Broadway at Third Avenue and Fifth Avenue. Those are the two that we're recommending. So those projects total $2,605,000. There'll be a down payment of $130,250, leaving a total bond amount of $2,474,750.
How much was it?
The total bond, $2,474,750.
What did you say the cost of the lights were?
$112,000 each is the quote that we have from traffic.
And we want to do two for this year?
We're recommending to do two, yes.
So in seven years, we'll have all of them done?
Yeah. And I'm not sure that all 14 need to be done, but we'd like to go through them in some sort of, you know, a regular maintenance program to try to... But I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. If you've seen those two lights, they get a fair amount of pedestrian traffic, and we're trying to get the signals working properly.
Are they different from the old ones?
No, they're different. Yeah, I think it's a different housing and different LED lights now.
Is it just the actual lighting itself, or is it the poles and the whole stuff?
No, the poles remain. The fixtures, the fixtures and the control components, they change. Yes.
Does the countdown on the numbers on the side, is that what it is?
Yeah, it flashes, you know, in some form or fashion, whatever the current standard is. There's a couple of other things that we're doing outside of the bond is we're doing the resurfacing of the Branchport Park and installing a handicap swing at Atlantic Avenue, which is a swing we took out of the West End Park. And we saved that handicap swing. As you know, we put a new park in West End, so we moved this one to the other park. But the handicap swing was still in good shape, so we saved it. It could be reinstalled at Atlantic Avenue. This will bring to all of our parks some semblance of handicap programming. And all of the playgrounds will all now have safety surfaces on them. No more wood chips. So that's about $100,000, which we have. Mike is able to take that out of an existing ordinance that we have. And then the final item is we received, I'm sure most of you have seen, you saw emails, we received Transportation Trust fund money to do the Branchport Avenue paving, which was Phase One was from Atlantic Avenue to July Avenue. Phase Two, we applied for from July to Broadway, and we received approval. We're about $130,000 short to do the whole road. But Mike has found that money. We don't need to borrow funds for our match on that. So it's additional projects will be done outside of that $2,500,000.
Thank Ron.
So we're just looking for consensus to produce an ordinance to introduce it next month.
Is everybody okay with that? Any questions?
Are we going to be doing a government election?
Yeah, we have one currently underway now. I think we're... Dave, you aware of it?
I'm just waiting for a couple departments to give me the information, and I'm ready to go.
Yeah, we're almost done.
I just mean that will help with what we're going to do, get buying new stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Get rid of the old stuff.
Clearly, you know, our direction, you know, is to get rid of stuff, and we're doing that. I think the last one was $77,000, that function. So, yeah, we're waiting on a couple departments now.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
So are we okay with this?
Yes.
I think so. Do we have the list of roads and all?
I do. And what I planned on doing was providing you with a packet, in your next packet, is some cut sheets of the equipment, so you can see what it is, have an idea of it, along with the list and the pricing.
How many roads are there?
There's 10. Some are bigger than others, some are smaller ones, but, yeah.
Throughout the city?
Throughout the city, yeah. Second Avenue Cedar to Brighton, Berry Place, Conover Place, Florence Avenue from the Bridge to Atlantic, Memorial, Barfield to Chelsea, Park Avenue to the Bridge to Ocean, Pearl Street, Broadway and the Vat, Rockwell, July to Broadway, Shrewsbury Avenue Cottage to Lake, and there's a Portu connection at the end of Park Place and Brittany Street. They are scattered completely all over the city.
Kevin, I know you described it before. What's the process under which the selection process will be?
So what we do is we present a list to the city engineer and have him go out and look and see if he agrees with us. In this case, I gave it to Stan, and Stan and his road supervisors went out through the city and created a list, narrowed down to a manageable city to do. This is based on their recommendation.
How many holes, how bad they are, looking at those qualifications?
Yeah.
How bad?
Exactly. So, and don't forget, we have this 17 program that you approved last year, which is going to start in the next two weeks. So, you know, we got shut down for weather last year.
Yeah.
They closed the plant. So they'll be doing a couple of smaller streets. They're going to be starting the drainage at the lot at the West End Avenue pharmacy. We're putting underground drainage and repaving that entire lot. That's going to start next week. And also, excuse me, this week, they're finishing up the curbs and sidewalks and patents to start that in a week or so as well. So that's the big one. That's patented, the whole length from the bridge to...
Wow.
Down to... Yeah, and so that's all been set aside in last year's program, and there's probably another six other streets. There's Neptune Avenue, Marine Terrace, Bulling, the Ocean, Elbrun, the entire length of the north, Fifth from Broadway to July, West End Court, Second and Railroad, Baker Place, and Hendrickson Avenue. Again, streets all throughout the city, what we felt at the time needed the most attention.
How many streets from the city, you know?
I do not know the answer to that.
Any other questions? If not, we're going to move on to Mr. Zuba with the lifeguarding private beaches.
Just to go back to that, it's okay. We're going to introduce an ordinance. I'll prepare an ordinance for next meeting for this, all these items.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mike.
I think they all agreed. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, bro.
We have it on video now.
Good evening. I was approached about a month ago by the Ocean Place Villas, Harbor Mansion, and Ocean Cove to consider guarding their beaches. Surf Rescue went out of business all at one time, so that's who guarded them in the past. So we did a little analysis on whether we could do it as far as manpower goes, and we can. We figured the equipment. We figured the cost due to lifeguards. And we're only going to guard the pools at Ocean Place and at the Renaissance. The Renaissance is the fifth one. We had them last year, so we're going to do that again. We added in all the equipment. We added in what the staffing would be if it was a nice sunny day, full staffing every day. Then we sat down with administration, and we added on the total, what we thought, you know, would be fair. And we come up with, we know we have enough bodies that we can do it. And what we're doing is just, you know, asking you if it's okay, if you want to go with that, or if you have any questions.
What will we be charging you?
It's an overall figure. I have...
Oh, okay.
Kevin's going to give it to you.
Okay.
In a packet, depending on what it is. We'll present it to you next, in your packet.
Okay.
Each, Stan had itemized.
It's more for each, depending. Ocean Place, like, is much more than Villas and Harbor Mansion.
Right, right, right.
Because they have more. And whoever has the pool, we have to double that with the guards in there. So we have, it's all set up here, and then I can talk to you guys about what it is.
You know, we really weren't looking for the work, but it's come to Stan. And Stan and his staff feel that, you know, having the control of the beaches is a safer operation for us, for the city, you know, more closely monitored and guarded.
Yeah.
So, you know, we said if we can make a reasonable amount of money for the city, then we'll do it. So we're not there to work for nothing.
Right.
But we went through it. You know, these figures are based on full staff every single day of the summer, sunny day, which you know you're not going to get.
I went back and I talked to them, gave them just the ballpark, told them it was not a contract or nothing. I had to speak to everybody here on the price that we agree with, within that area. They were all good with it. Had sent me emails back that they're fine with it, and they would like to get going on it, so.
And they approved two last year. They approved Renaissance?
Yeah, Renaissance Beach and Pool.
Beach and Pool. And was there one other stand?
No, just the Renaissance last year, yes.
Jimmy, are there any liability issues with us, Kevin, or something like that, or no?
The answer is the same liability that would attach to a municipal beach. You increase your liability because you're now serving that facility. The only potential liability that I can see is you have Ocean Place, all right? Now, Ocean Place is a hotel, and they serve alcoholic beverages. Now, you may have a greater number of people who have consumed alcoholic beverages and show up on the beach and are swimming, bathing, sunbathing in a condition that might put them at more risk than someone else. So that we would have to look at when this came, or comes before the council on a formal basis, what kind of indemnifications, what kind of insurance, what kind of assumption of risk will the Ocean Place take? Because this is more of a public facility than simply a condominium association. You know, so we have to look at it. My other question is, John, and to the rest of the council, is once we put our, the city puts its foot in the water with respect to this and says, okay, we'll do you, you, and you, are we not inviting other people to come in from other condominium associations and say, hey, this is a real good job? And number one, could we staff it if the other condominium associations decide, let's get rid of our services and use the city? And two, you know, we'll be stretching our service to the limit where we're not paying attention to the primary job of the beachfront, and that's to protect the city beaches.
Okay, an answer to that is, there's only one beach left on the entire Long Branch beaches that we cover from Taconacy all the way through, which is Harbor Man... I'm sorry.
Imperial?
Imperial House. Every other beach, if we do this, we have complete control of. Before we even answered them, we sat down, I sat down with Danny and Chris Kuiper, and went over if we could staff it and not have to take away anything from Long Branch beaches. We've put out applications out, and we got overwhelming response back from good lifeguards. We've already started some interview processes with no promises on whether we could do this, and we're 100% confident that we can handle this with no problem.
We doing anything south of Taconacy?
No.
Will you do Taconacy?
No.
We're going to do Taconacy.
No, we're going to do Taconacy, but nothing south of Taconacy.
We'll have access to go there to some places.
Yes, yes.
Help out with beach access.
Yes, since the beach access is there, we're going to put the ticket booth back in there.
Will you be able to get south of there if you have?
Yes, we can still get south of there, yes.
Does that, how does that affect our liability insurance?
We've already done Taconacy. It's already in the beach ordinance that we just didn't do it last year because of the construction and stuff like that. But it's already in the ordinance. That's one of the beaches that's already in there to be covered. We did that a couple of years ago.
I'm going to assume that any increases in insurance that the city incurs gets passed on to these charges.
We'll review that with Dominic.
Yeah, there's some work to do before. This could get to you where the administration is all totally comfortable.
Yeah, we didn't want to go too far before we got your permission, that you wanted to do it. If you tell us you want to do it, then we'll start doing it.
We don't want to string out the...
We'll start doing the homework on it.
The associations. If you're not interested, you tell someone, just don't forget, and go to them personally.
Because we got to get it done by the end of April.
You know, I think it's a good idea because an area of consistency in our lifeguards.
Exactly.
You don't know what kind of caliber lifeguard you're going to get at some of these condo associations. And we know from experience that, you know, our guards are very well-trained, and they do a great job. So I think it'd be great for, a positive thing for us to do to keep.
And we know who's guarding.
I mean, it's the same situation to us. Three guards on the beach at all times. They're going to have, their radios are included in there. We're buying new radios if we do this. Everybody be on the radio. We're expanding the EMT services to them also for quicker response. So we go to north, central, and south TMTs. They'll be covering, they'll pick it up and everything like that. So, you know, I wouldn't take it on if we didn't think it would work, and I really think we can handle without an issue. And I like the fact that it's all under our control now, where we have, you know, the other lifeguards, not the not qualified lifeguards, but they're not up to the US LA standards as we will be. And, you know, we're comfortable with that.
And all the cost of any equipment that's needed is included in their plan.
I also want to commend the beach staff with the ordinance. The resolution we're doing tonight talks about the beaches, putting five to seven. What beaches are going to be manned late if need be? And I think that's good for the public to see.
Yeah.
That if you want to stay till 7 o'clock on a guarded beach, you need to go to work with beaches.
Everyone knows where. Everyone's on the same page, roughly.
Right.
As you know.
Yeah, what we do is we basically, you know, take the EMTs and whoever's left on the beaches on the roving and put them on vehicles. And then they, all the people are shuffled to the beaches where the lifeguards are. We don't let anybody swim that we can handle. I mean, sometimes it gets really crowded on the hot days. We try to pull everybody out and put them on the guarded beaches after that 5:00 time.
Stan, is it a straight run then from Taconacy all the way up, or are there any...
It's a straight run from Taconacy right now. Even, I was just down there the other day, even with the beach that we lost in the last storms and stuff like that, from Seaview Avenue right straight through to the Deal border, it's a straight run.
And then those that were not guarding, are they okay with our vehicles going back and...
Yes, no issue. They like to, they actually like to see us because we're patrolling, you know. Not only we're there, but the police are there on their vehicles too. So they're helping us out too, and we're taking care of any alcohol problems or anything like that as we go along. Plus, on the days when it's really bad, we're pulling people out of the water, you know, try to prevent some issues.
Okay, so what's feeling on that, Kate?
I'm good.
Good, thank you.
So we'll have something in the time, hopefully for next meeting, for you.
Okay, next we have Chief Robach with changes to the ABC ordinance.
Good evening. So we came, came to find a little problem with the ABC ordinance. Way it works now is you come to get your card for the first time. You take your fingerprints, make sure that you qualify for it, and you get your card. The ordinance then reads every year after that. You come back and you reapply, and it's a $10 fee. Well, that's not enough to run anybody's fingerprints again. So what we found out is you could get your card and just come back every year, and you could do something that would make us not give you the card, and we would never know. So in order to fix that, we came up with this, with the changes in this ordinance, which would be to have them do their fingerprints every time they come and get a card. It's going to cost them a little more money, and to offset that, we said we would make the cards good for two years, so they don't have to come back every year, which also helps us a little downstairs by not having to do cards every single year. So those are the main changes in that ordinance. There's a bunch of other, just wording that we cleaned up in some other places that was old and didn't really apply and that kind of stuff. But that is the main change that we're looking for, changing some of the fees and making them good for two years, and making them have to give their fingerprints every two years when they come back.
Did you meet with the restaurant owners, or the cabin owners?
We did not.
There used to be years ago a long ways ago, an associate that...
There's all one? I don't think there is one anymore.
I haven't heard.
It used to be headed by the owners of Casey Jones.
Marvin and...
Now, how many courts do we issue a year?
A lot, quite a few. I don't know. I don't know the number.
But all waiters?
I signed, all the waiters.
Surfers, bartenders, barback?
And especially now that it would become more of a summer, you know, destination. Some people come here and just work for the summer.
Right.
We changed this a while ago because we're getting a lot of people from overseas that were coming here. And if you remember, we changed it so they could have some more time to get their social security card, because they need that number to be able to get an ABC card. So that was the last time we changed it for that. But we get quite a few. There are stacks of them every summer that we do.
I don't clearly mean exactly why you need to make the change. I didn't understand it.
What was that?
Why you need to make the changes?
So what happened, what actually happened is I was actually looking through these, and there was a person, whom I'm not going to name, who got an ABC card probably 14 years ago. And every year, they would come back and they would just do the renewal for $10. Well, one year, they forgot just to do the renewal. So they have to do the whole thing over again when they forget to do the renewal, right? So now comes, come to me to sign because I just signed the cards when they come. So I'm looking, and I look at the name, and I go, I arrested this person several years ago for something. I'm like, there's no way this person... So I start looking through and go, well, this person has an ABC card for years because we never knew. Because the way the ordinance was written, that it didn't let you take fingerprints every single year. It only let you do it once in the beginning. And obviously, if someone did something in five years or six years down the line, we had no way to know.
Do you think it was written that when we were taking the fingerprints ourselves?
It probably was.
Which is why the $10 probably makes sense.
Right, it probably makes sense then.
At the time, right?
For $10. Because now we give them the ABC card, and that card itself and the machine is like $6 or $7. So we would never make it just $10.
Is two years okay? I know some organizations have five-year gap in between having their fingerprints taken.
Taxi licenses, we do two years also, which is why we went for two years again. We feel that's a pretty good, pretty good number. If you go five, it's, that could be, you know, it's kind of a long, long time in between for someone to do something and us not to know about it.
You're going to up the fee. The fee going to go up also?
The, only the fee for the renewal card will go up. The regular card's the same fee, and we keep our fees just what they have to pay to get their fingerprints done at the Morpho Track place. It's $40 something for state prints or something like that, just like the taxes.
Recharge them?
We don't charge them. They go online. They pay themselves right to the...
They pay for it. That was my thing. I didn't know if we were going to have to pay that.
No, we don't. No, we don't have to do that. They go online. They make their thing. They pay right online. They go. Same thing when you're getting firearms permit, a taxi license, an ABC card. They go and make their own, make their own online appointments and pay for it themselves.
I think it's reasonable.
Any other questions?
I think we do need to check up.
Yeah, there are certain things by our ordinance and by the state law that they can't work in these places if they've done.
What kind of drugs?
Hmm?
Drug, drugs.
Drug dealing, thefts, any...
Moral, moral.
Moral interpretive is what they use, which technically could be any first through fourth degree crime. But, you know, normally the first or second of your crimes is probably okay. Gambling?
Yes.
Could be.
Illegal gambling.
Could be, yes. It could be. You can lose your license, right, yes.
The situation is, is that many, or if not most, of the people who apply for ABC licenses don't necessarily live in the city.
No.
So the potential for them to get into some kind of association with the criminal justice system from any part of the state is more rampant or possible than it is that we would ever know about it.
Does this just cover the state or any...
This just covers our city. Anybody who wants to work.
No, I'm sorry. When you do a fingerprint check.
State and federal.
So this would cover anybody who decided to go to California for the winter?
Right. Right, and as we become, like I said, as we become more seasonal, you do get more people from out of town that come here and work for the summer.
Right.
Years ago, when this was written, probably 30, 40 years ago, everyone probably lived here, worked in the bars here, probably knew who they were, you know. Now, we don't. I mean, there are probably literally thousands, you know, in the summer.
How do you do, how do you check international orders?
Interpol, and we don't. We don't. Yeah, no, we don't unless we have a reason to. I mean, we could if we wanted to, but we don't check them for regular things. It would cost way too much money.
I was curious.
So any other questions? Are we good with this?
I'm good. I'm good.
Go ahead. Andrew? Eric? No? Chris?
Thank you.
Okay, next is the performance and maintenance guarantees, planning and zoning ordinance.
All right, as, thank you. As, it's a rather brief unless there are a lot of questions. Uh... As you are aware, the legislature in its wisdom decided to pass a statute, a state statute, that reduces the amount of bonds that have to be posted by developers in the city of Long Branch, of any nature and any kind, to limit those performance bonds to cover the public part of the project, when in the past it had been to cover the performance to build out the entire project, so that the city was, or cities, townships were better protected. This ordinance went into effect and became effective January the fifteenth. So numerous, uh... Developers and attorneys wanted to make sure that this ordinance, that this statute, was covered in the municipal ordinances. Now, I believe it's been determined by the administration that the interpretation of this ordinance is going to be that, purposes in the city, that any plan or plan that has been approved prior to the enactment of this ordinance and bonds have been posted or required to be posted, this is not going to be applied in any way retroactively. It will only apply to projects prospectively, which is the intent and purpose of most, if not all, of these state statutes. So what this ordinance does is simply its belt and suspenders saying that the ordinance of the city of Long Branch will comply with state law with respect to this ordinance.
So basically what they're saying is that if the developer comes in and takes over, puts it, putting up a project, and the street is being worked on, the sidewalks being worked on, the gutters and all that, which is public area, they do not have to bond?
No, they do. They bond for the public.
That's all they...
That's what they bond for.
Okay.
What they don't bond for is their own sticks and bricks, the, the project itself, the interior side of the project. So if they stop halfway through the project, there's no bond in place anymore for future projects that the city would be able to call upon to finish the project. So you'd have a bond to finish the streets, the sidewalks, the gutters, and anything else that was public that they had to do, but that would be done in a vacuum because there could be...
Right.
Two stories completed as opposed to four.
And then what do we do then?
Well, then normally what will happen is the bank that is financing the operation kicks in. Kicks in, and it, through its guarantees and performance bonds, that it forces the project to obtain and developer to obtain, they will enforce their guarantees and finish the project as a financial institution. So in a practical sense, the city is not going to be hurt, but the project could be delayed while that process all takes place, and the banks look and see what they've got as collateral and what they wanna finish, and why the project got to the state that it's in, why it's in default. Because if they're not finishing the project, unless the bank has total reserves for interest that are appropriately reserved in its mortgage documents, there's gonna be a default to the lender.
Jimmy, who would be pushing for that legislation, do you know?
Builders Association.
They've been very successful, they had something that we changes in the building code that doesn't require permits for things that used to require permits for. They're very powerful lobby in the state.
Roots and something else.
Roots siding, some, some money.
We don't have a choice with this, then?
We have no choice because of state law. No municipality in the state has any choice with respect to this.
We're just making the ordinance match the state laws already.
Right. Should, you know, did the League of Municipalities object to this?
Yeah.
Yes, they did. And they pointed out what I just pointed out to you, that there are, this is a, uh... Less of, less protection for the municipalities where building projects are, are being, uh... Being built. Uh... Look, a prime example of this, and believe me, I'm not picking on a neighboring municipality, but in, in, as a factual matter, in Esbury Park, you saw what was called C eight. That started to be developed, uh... In the nineteen eighties, then it started again in two thousand and five, and now it's